No, I'm sorry.
I just thought maybe you already had it.
Um, Morgan.
Our trailer's?
Yeah, our trailer's planned out because there's a lot of different children in the show.
Yeah.
We're cutting some pigs, but they're only going with one. Our pigs have gone to the park. Two cows.
Where is this horse?
There you go.
Probably right.
Oh.
Yeah, she's got her rabbit.
She's got a new tattoo.
Yeah, just, uh, you gotta do that. Beginning here. Yeah, I don't know. That's called meeting.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Uh, tonight we're going to start with a public hearing at Fillmore Central High School for the purpose of reviewing the amount of money collected from students pursuant to and the use of waivers provided in the student fee policies of the district for the 2011, 2012 school year, holding a public hearing to discuss, consider, and receive input on the student fee policy. The public will be given the opportunity to present information and opinions on the student fee policy, discussing, considering, and taking action to adopt a student fee policy. Should that be 1212? Who's that?
Oh, no, it's 1112. The review's on the 1112.
I see, okay.
Then if anybody wants to propose a change to the fees, then now's the time to take any of those comments. So, did everyone get one in their packet? I'll just review through that with you a little bit. We did basically been doing the same thing for a few years in driver's ed. This would be the second year of the laptop student fee. But, um, on your sheet, on the left side, in driver's education, we had, uh, 23 drivers. We have three that still haven't paid. We had 20 that paid their tuition and that was amounts to, I think, $235 apiece and that brought us in $4,700. And we will collect, I'm sure, the other three eventually because Mr. Malone doesn't release their things so they can get their driver's license until they pay it. So, we don't really push the issue. We've always been able to get the money, so, uh, you know, it'll come in. And we set up payment plans for people if they want to. We can do that. So, on the expense side, it shows you the car lease. Uh, we do the car through Sutton. Fuel, install a brake, we have to change oil before we take it back, $10 to license, the instructor salary, which we pay out of general fund, and the FICAN retirement, and then, uh, whatever money we have left, we reimburse the general fund for the instructor salary. So, uh, you know, instructor salary there listed there. Expenses were about $3,000 more than that. Our revenue was $4,700, so we apply the rest towards the general fund received. We're supposed to zero out our student fee fund every year. Not supposed to be a profit maker, which we're not, so, so we zero it out. For laptop insurance, uh, 149 students selected to do the, uh, school insurance that we cover at $35 a fee for each one of those. And so, that's the premiums are $5,215. First time a lap, with our insurance, the first time a laptop is damaged, they pay 10% of the cost. And second time, which doesn't happen very often, I think it's 20%, or if they have their own homeowner's policy covered, then they pay, they pay us directly. So, those would be those repair deductibles there, money that came in to fix machines. And then there's the total revenue. The total repairs we had through Apple or wherever we go, Apple mostly, was $21,000. So, as you can see, we certainly don't profit in the laptop insurance. A year ago, I think it was about, I should've brought that with me, but I wanna say we spent about $9,000 or $10,000 in repairs. This will be the third year, so I think there may be even more repairs. You never know unless we've got most of them fixed by now, but, but I feel, I still feel like it's, it's kinda no different than what we had before. Before when we had two laptop or two, uh, computer stations in the building, computer labs, we were spending $10,000 to $12,000 a year to keep them, keep them going anyway and updating and fixing, so it's not a whole lot different than that. We also have the opportunity at the end of this year to take those 180 laptops and they're ours for a dollar each and sell them, uh, you know. So, that's another way to get back some of that, some of that money. So, I still think it's, you know, it's, it's about a break even proposal as to what we did before. It's not a whole lot, a whole lot different. We could charge more in premiums, but I think what we charge is fair and I think, I think parents appreciate it. Questions, comments on the student fee review? We haven't raised our driver's ed fees in a while and we haven't, we haven't raised the laptop insurance fee and that certainly would be a point of discussion now if you felt that was necessary.
I guess my, my only concern is that we're not $21,000. I'd like to see what it goes next year before we decide if we need to raise it. You know, then we go back on a three-year average and maybe come, like I said, we don't even make money on it, but we don't wanna lose.
Okay. And by next year, we'll have, we'll have three years of revenue, a loss, plus we'll have whatever we make on selling them, but we can kinda see where we're.
Then we'll have a full.
Right.
Full term. It may almost wash out then by the time we sell it.
But it's gonna cost you something every year, no matter what kinda computers you have, to keep them up. It just is.
Is that conclusion?
I think so.
Well, that concludes our hearing. Now, we'll go on to the regular meeting. I'd like to recognize the open meetings poster on the wall by the door. Roll call? Yes.
Shalkoff?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Lightwine?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
None, yes, Del Meyer?
Yes. Need a declaration of a legal meeting?
Sooner.
You have a second?
Second.
Moved by Mark and seconded by Jim, that this regular meeting of August 20th be declared a legal meeting. Roll call?
Lightwine?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Shalkoff?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
None, yes, Ashner?
Yes.
Del Meyer?
Yes.
Anybody missing? This is a portion of the meeting that we use for public comment. If anyone has anything for the board, I'd like to address the board. You're welcome to do so now. And then we'll move into reports from the administration. Ms. Rose?
Well, the school year's gotten off to a good start. You always hate to say that too loud because you don't wanna change yourself, but it's been a good start. Um, you know, those coast students coming in and waiting for the bus, kept me ate very well. Um, only two other things to add to my report. First thing is, um, every school in Nebraska is doing the allegiance, K-12. The high school is because of marching band in the morning. Marching band is doing it at 7:00 a.m. before they start practice. Mainstay of the high school does it at 8:10. And we've been asking a new student every morning to go ahead and meet the school building and pledge. We had one young lady say, no, she was too embarrassed to do that. That's fine, we're not gonna force anybody to do that, but I think I've asked four or five kids so far, and I've only had one student tell me she was too embarrassed. So, it's worked out pretty well. Uh, the other thing, last year at this time, I think we were probably 11, 12 new students in our district at the high school alone. This year we have only three, and one of those is an exchange student. But, we'll see how things go. Uh, if we add more students, Michelle was saying earlier, how many new kids she's getting, so maybe it's the elementary certain. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Just a couple things, nothing really to, for the report to add. I, I just would like to thank my secretary Lori Scott. Uh, she's been a tremendous help to me to get the school year started. I, I think it's gone very well at the start. Uh, the open house was as successful as I said in my report, but Lori, I would like to commend her for her, her help and assistance with me. Uh, to echo Mr. Rose, our enrollment now is 147 as of today. Uh, at last April, we were at 160, so we're probably down a little bit, but, uh, we too haven't seen, and Lori said even the influx of new students for us was not as sharp as last year, still. Otherwise, I have nothing to add.
I would say we had a great start to our school year as well. Everything's gone smoothly and Ron and Dee did a great job, worked hard getting the building ready and the teachers were in the summer and adding the personality and, um, so it was great. Open house was a success. We had nearly everyone of the, of the kids attend and saw some of you there, so thank you for those of you that were able to attend. I appreciate that. You're always welcome in the building. Um, as far as the pledge plan, most of the classrooms had already had that as part of their, um, routine and due to the ways that the, the kids transition in, whether they go to carpet or their cubbies or to their desks, um, we're gonna have each classroom continue to do the pledge in their own classroom and then we'll use the intercom system for, um, special occasions. The kids like to come down often in groups and, and lead that, so we'll use that for special occasions. It'll just be part of the daily routine otherwise. Um, our enrollment, when I put the report together, it was 193 this year and ending the year at 194, but we, just today, we enrolled a few more and, uh, got the names of a couple more for later in the week, so we're still adding a few. Um, so yes, a very smooth start to the school year.
Any questions?
Um, Mr. Atkinson and Jenny Stengel are gonna lead our school improvement starting this year. Mr. Klein had done that previously. We're kinda team, team doing it. As both Steve and Jenny were a part of the committee before. Remember that we're first Wednesday of every month in the fall here, we take off the afternoon and, uh, students are released and we have our professional development days. Some of it we do, uh, in each building, some of it we come together, but basically reading is still our primary goal in all three buildings and, uh, so I just wanna let you know Steve and Jenny Stengel are leading that. This is, I talked earlier about our laptop lease. This is the third year of our three-year lease. Certainly, I would like to continue forward after this year, uh, with the laptop lease. I'll negotiate with Apple and sometime during the year, present a possible package to the board. The board still wishes to continue and, uh, at least we'll get a price as to what we've been doing similar. Mabel Netso, we have proof of registration for all three graduates and we'll be mailing them a check. We normally wait till after September board meeting, so, uh, at least the interest through August, so we have that on the, the CD. And we've already talked a little bit about the pledge of allegiance, so that's, uh, basically, I think, my report until we get down to some budget items and I'll talk a little bit more.
Any questions? Moving to the action items. A motion for the minutes of the July 16th meeting.
To move.
Second. Moved by Shalkoff, accepted by Kleinschmidt. The board through the minutes of the July 16th regular board vegetation meeting discussion? Roll call?
Shalkoff?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Lightwine?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
None, yes, Ashner?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Del Meyer?
Yes.
Need a motion for the financial reports? Second. Moved by Dave, accepted by Jim, that the board approved the financial reports as presented. Discussion? Roll call?
Ashner?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Lightwine?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
None, yes. Shalkoff?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Del Meyer?
Yes.
Need a motion for the general fund claims?
Sooner.
Second.
Moved by Lightwine and seconded by Shalkoff, that the board approved the general fund claims amount of $360,006.46. Discussion?
Probably the largest bill there is our final payment to ESU for fed services, $166,891. And then we also did prepay. We paid $12,000 in textbooks and $24,000 in supplies for this coming year. We paid out of this year's budget since we had, since we had plenty of money to do so.
Roll call?
Lightwine?
Yes.
Shalkoff?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
None, yes, Ashner?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Del Meyer?
Yes.
Need a motion for the building fund claims? I'll move.
I'll second.
Moved by Jim and seconded by Mark, that the board approved the building fund claims amount of $126,000, $125,000.
I think I put a break down there in your pile when you got here today, so in case you knew what everything is about.
Roll call?
Donovan?
Yes.
Lightwine?
Yes.
None, yes, Ashner?
Yes.
Shalkoff?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
Del Meyer?
Yes.
Do you have a recommendation on this?
Um, yeah, I think in the, I think we should, my recommendation, we do at least $50,000, up to $100, whatever the board feels comfortable with, but currently our depreciation fund is like $101,000.
So, we need a motion moved from the general fund to the depreciation. Mark, with the bills you've paid and everything, do you have a number you'd rather see that you can do or?
Well, if we're gonna, if we're gonna consistently do it every year, $50,000 is fine. It's an easy number to work with. You know, a bus costs $80,000, so if we're gonna consistently do $40,000 to $50,000 a year, then, then we're gonna be fine. We just purchased buses a year ago and I'm not sure what schedule we wanna be on, but, uh, that would give us, you know, $150,000 every three years. That would be more than enough. If we wanna take, take, you know, a couple of years off and not transfer any out, then I think you probably do, oughta do more because this was a pretty good year. We got plenty of budget room left and you never know, we may, we may not have that budget room in other years, but I think last year we did 35. I think the year before that, we did 30. So, we've been, we've been, we've been pretty steady. It's just that we, we spent a big chunk last year when we bought buses, so.
So, are you recommending 50? Is that what?
Yeah, we're gonna do it every year, 50's fine.
I just wanted to make sure I heard that, right?
So, we need a motion?
When you make your motion, just give us the dollar amount that I view as well to do it.
Move to 50? You have a second?
I'll second.
More? Moved by Dave and seconded by Mark, that the board approved the movement of $50,000 from the 2011, 2012 general fund into the depreciation fund to be used in the future. Discussion?
Keep in mind that it shows up as an expenditure. You know, just move it to the depreciation fund. We actually gotta show it as an expenditure on buses and then, and then we, then it goes into the depreciation fund, so, you know, makes our expenditures look $50,000 more than they were, but that's how it gets in the depreciation fund. We're spending it into the depreciation fund. That's how the auditor sees it, so.
Roll call?
Ashner?
Yes.
Lightwine?
Yes.
Shalkoff?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
None, yes, Del Meyer?
Yes.
Superintendent evaluation document. Need a motion. I'll move. Jim?
Second.
Moved by Jim and seconded by Dave, that the board approved the superintendent evaluation document as presented. Discussion?
Donovan?
Yes.
Ashner?
Yes.
Shalkoff?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Lightwine?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
None, yes, Del Meyer?
Yes.
We're moving to the discussion items review and discuss the 2012, 2013 budget.
I got a couple different handouts for you. The one I think I also sent to you as an attachment, righty, the projected budget of expenditures, so I go through that first with you and see if there were, were any questions. We have basically within our budget for separate budgets, we have a budget for the elementary, a budget for the middle school, a budget for the high school, and then what we consider to be our district budget. Um, I have listed in the first column what our budget was for 2011 and 2012. Our total budget is listed in the blue. Keep in mind that we added cash reserve in there that we were never planning on spending, so that inflated our budget a little bit. The main increases that we're gonna have at the elementary, the TIC, the TIC is the ages three and four. It's a, it's a fairly large increase. Um, we also, we, we do TIC together with Exeter, Milligan, Shipley, McCool, is that correct, Michelle? That all come here. And then, of course, your build per student and this happens to be one of those years where we have more of the students than the other schools, so our, our costs are gonna be just a little bit higher there. Middle school, there wasn't a whole lot of increase mainly because with some staff changes, uh, money exchanged there was enough. Plus, I, I think I moved liability learning out of there into the district budget, so that caused a little bit of a change, so we didn't need as much. Same for the high school. In the district, we're paying $50,000 for early retirement of, of two staff, and then I didn't budget enough, near enough for fuel for transportation this year. That was probably the biggest increases, plus about a $20,000 increase in insurance, liability insurance and property insurance when we switched, switched carriers there. So, those were the main, the main increases. Again, this is a proposal, so, you know, if you've got any questions or comments, certainly welcome to share those at any time. The second page is the receipt page, which I think's really more important to me than you can budget whatever you want to, but it really comes down to how much did you bring in and how much did you spend. So, the receipts, what we do right now, or we've done the last two years, is we don't, we just bring in enough receipts to cover our expenditures. We used to budget, all of our receipts matched our budget, so if we were budgeting $7.8 million, we were bringing $7.8 million in. Well, then when we didn't spend our budget, that would add to our cash, and that's how we built cash for, for six years. Well, once we got, you know, $1.8 billion in cash, I think the consensus was that we don't really need to add any more cash, and I agree. So, now, for example, this past year, you know, we budgeted $7.5 million, $7,570, but we only planned receipts for $7,200, $7,250, and we're gonna end up about there, and that's about what we spent. I think when Lynn and I did it today, it was $7,225 we have spent. Our receipts are at $6,991, but we got a check today for $173,000, which was, I believe, awards of the court, health and human services, which is a little under what I think they owe us, but that's usually the, the way that goes.
So, is that a final payment though? We won't get the difference?
No, we'll get a, we'll still get a summer school payment, but we won't get it till probably October.
So, will that make up the difference from the $173 to the $190?
We always hope it does.
Okay. But that's gonna be hard to ask, though.
It's, you know, the auditor usually gets it straightened out. When he gets here, he'll tell us what we were short and then they're pretty good about getting us what they didn't pay us. It just doesn't come in the budget year, so they've been pretty good about it, so.
Will we get that public power district thing toward two?
Yeah, the, what the auditor ticks it out of where it's, we have it all in local property tax, Jim, and he'll, he'll, he'll move it out. So, we've already got it. We just, it's tough for Lynn to read the actual code of where it's supposed to do, so she just leaves it in property tax, but it'll, it'll get there. Title I, like Title I and Title II and IDA, I have filed for all of those, what they owe us, and, I mean, I'm guessing they'll come in before the 31st. I filed them at the first of August, but the wheels of the Department of Ed turn slowly some days and, you know, you're just, we're gonna get it, just might be on the next budget year, so.
And those, those are hard and fast numbers?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. The IDA, Title I, Title II, I, we will get those, we just may not get them. We just may not get them this budget year, so. The awards of the court, we'll get it, but it could be later in the year, so. So, you know, regardless of, of where you set your budget, you know, it, it comes down to how much you bring in and how much you spend. If you wanna go back to the budget of expenditures, you know, in the blue again, I'm budgeting for $7,850,000, but on the receipt page here, I'm only expecting $7,500,000 in receipts, so I certainly don't wanna spend over $7,500,000. You know, if we do, it's an emergency, it's something you've approved, and we have to understand that we're gonna use some of our cash if we do, but, um, you know, my preference is that we don't spend any more than what we bring in. It's been possible, we've managed to do it. Hopefully, we'll continue to manage to do it, so. Questions on that document? There's a third page that I added that I don't think I sent that one home with you. I just, but it's an example of, of I think, uh, how hard we try in our budget. There's a couple of things that we can't control. I mean, ESU services, we can't do without them. They're, they're fantastic. They, they, they provide our sex, success program services, but they also provide speech path, hearing, vision, school psychologists, et cetera. Those are expensive things. And if you look over the last, and this is for my tenure here, over the seven years going on my eighth, it's, it's averaged increase at 8.6% a year. It's, they're just high cost. Their sped costs, and they're high. In return, we do get reimbursement on about 50% of those costs back as a revenue source, but they're just high cost. Heartland Boys Home, it's skyrocketed. I mean, it's 10 and a half percent, but again, that's a dollar-for-dollar match. We get it, we just don't always get it back in the, in the same budget year. So, if you look at the rest of our budget, then take those two things out, our rest of our budget has increased 3.3% over that year. That's the average percent every year, so, you know, I think, I think we've done a good job of it. Just the cost to educate kids and some of those costs never go down, they, they wanna go up. I did some time this weekend then working on a proposed levy. And again, this is just proposed. The board will, you know, have an opportunity for input and email me in the next three weeks. The next board meeting's coming quick, 'cause we have this one late, so it's September 10th, so. But I'll go through this, you know, if you have any questions. It's a two-page, but I think the front page is, is pretty simple. The first two columns were our tax request for last year for this year, basically. Um, general. General fund, special building and Q cap, and there's the levy we set for each. Our valuation went up eleven point four percent this year. And so there's the tax request I have for general fund. For special building fund, I raised it a penny, but again, that doesn't have to be. That's up to to you, what you feel comfortable with there. We've been putting four cents about every year for the last three or four years. So some of that depends on what kind of projects you wanna try to take on. I I think it'd be fine still at four cents. If you dropped it to three cents, that's still about two hundred thousand a year. You can levy up to fourteen cents in your special building fund as long as you don't go over the dollar five. So we could levy fourteen cents. That's almost a million bucks. We could build our own gym and locker room if you want, you know, Alpray Garden, right? Wouldn't need a vote, wouldn't need a vote from people. But you can levy fourteen cents in your building fund as long as you don't go over the dollar five, so.
Sir, you proposed it maybe since you might have maybe used some of the science rooms and things like that?
That's that's the only reason I put a nickel instead of four cents is in in case we have a project in hand. Because, you know, we do, we do use our building fund, and we use it to do things, to maintain things and to do new things. But if we're gonna take on something else, we probably just need a little bit more revenue. Then the Q cap fund, and we have, I gotta get this right. We have, I think, three more years of payments, but probably only two more years of levy. We're levying this year, this is the twelve. We gotta levy in thirteen, we have to levy in fourteen. And then our last payment is December of fifteen. So we shouldn't have to levy after the fourteen, fifteen school year. Remember when we set these levies? We set them in September, but we don't really get that money till May and September of next year. You're always behind on your levy. So that's that's hard sometimes, and that's sometimes why our revenues just never quite balance out. But, you know, the levy we set in September, we really collect most of it in May and September. You know, May at the end of school and September at the start of a new school year is when you get your money. So that's that makes it a little bit difficult. These are just numbers I I threw out. And we can drop our levy, our general fund levy easily a nickel and still get a fairly large tax request. We can do whatever you want with the building fund. I'd like to leave it at least four cents. I I show five cents there just because our levy will still be less than than what it was this year. But the Q cap fund will go down a little bit every year just because once we got enough in there now, I don't know that, I think, I don't remember what our payments are, but they're about a hundred and thirty-five thousand a year or something like that, so. And I think we have a balance. We shouldn't have to levy more than that second year because we should have enough in our balance to pay it off. If we don't, then I I suggest we just use a little depreciation or something to pay it off rather than levy for it again that last year, so. The the section sheet shows our levy history, and that's the history of Fillmore Central starting in the two thousand one and two thousand two school year. We don't get state aid anymore, so our number one way to get funds is through property taxes.
What happened from two thousand seven and eight to two thousand eight and nine? That was a huge jump.
Ethanol plant. Took a million more in tax asking that year. Thought dropped our levy, and I don't think we might not have dropped it too much. We were probably planning to drop it the next year. Anyway, you just have to kinda let me know and talk to the board as what you feel comfortable with. We're we're in a good situation. We've got, we're gonna have a low levy regardless. We get no state aid, so we've got to count on property tax increase every year. And I don't know that everybody will see the increase when you drop your levy. Probably the people seeing the increase are the people owning irrigated farmland. That's the ones that'll see the increase. Everybody else will probably see a decrease when you drop your levy. Most people, when you drop it five cents, but. But the maximum we can do would be a dollar five? Yeah. But we could actually be at a dollar seven, 'cause you could pay your Q cap above the dollar five. So we could be at a dollar seven. We would have, we'd have so much money, Mark, and we'd know what to do with it. We were levying a dollar seven. Yeah, besides enemies, yeah, besides enemies. Yeah. Yeah, I understand why. But like I said, we're in a good situation. There's still a lot of schools that battle with the dollar five. We're right around it and can't can't raise enough revenue. And, I mean, so we're we're in a good situation. We have good good irrigated farm ground, and that certainly may start to benefit, so.
What was somewhere I read here, five percent increase?
For the proposed budget?
From the words that now?
For the valuation?
That's a total asking. Well, I say it went from five sixty-six to, is that, it's like three point four something? Is that right?
That would be the total. Well, are you, total budget increase would be three point four seven budget. I think the tax asking, again, that depends on where we we settle at with special building fund and everything.
Oh, that's right. Put that in there too.
I wa, I think the general fund tax request is probably close to five percent more than the than the tax request a year ago. Just doing the math in my head, Randy, I didn't, I don't have it on here, but I'm.
Well, I've said it before and half, but I'm trying to do that math, so. Some of the last.
Can you put the discussion on there?
Dennis, I got questions. So what would be the tax asking to make the budget work, roughly, kind of fun?
Well, what I have as proposed at, Greg, on my projected receipt is a little over five million five hundred thousand. I got it on the levy sheet, I got a five million five hundred and fifty-five thousand to made it a nice even, eight two cents. That's just general fund. That's just general.
I can remember clearly what was the dollar sixty-one.
The evaluations we thought? Should we move on now?
Well, email me, call me, et cetera, and let me know how you feel about it one way or another. I mean, if I don't hear from a lot or hear a lot of support, that's probably where it's gonna be, you know. You kinda have to visit with each other, find out what you feel good about. We'll have the hearing at the at the next meeting and chance to take public input, but that's that's where I have it right now, so.
So evaluations went up eleven?
Eleven point four.
And you're decreasing the budget, how much percent?
Not not decreasing the budget, but the levy, general fund, five cents. Qualified capital purposes, you know, two hundredths of a cent. Special building fund, depending on, right now, I haven't increased a penny on my proposal, but I'm comfortable with four cents too. I think we just kinda have to decide where we wanna go with our facility of need, what we wanna do.
Yeah, like you said, that comes basically six months behind the school before we can see that one.
Right. Well, you're getting some all the time, but but the levy we set basically is next year.
Well, if we were to increase that building fund, we wouldn't see any of that for tell. Over a year from now, right? Not this, none of it will happen in the school year, so.
We're gonna see the four cents we set up until basically next year.
Right.
The four cents that we set last year is what's being collected right now.
So the next item is board policy review, fifty-one hundred through fifteen fifty.
I guess I just need your sheets.
I think you have a question.
Sure.
And it kinda goes back to the high ability learners that you just talked about. You said you moved that budget item from the middle school to the district. How does that affect it and what are we actually doing?
High ability learning, it's not much budget. It's, I think they give, the state gives us fifty-seven hundred dollars, and we have to match it with another fifty-seven hundred. So it's probably about a twelve thousand dollar budget item. We used to have it in the elementary. Not sure exactly what they did for high ability learning activities. We had it in the middle school the last maybe three years. I don't know, Mr. Klein used it. He got some laptops for his eighth graders, not positive, Steve.
Janet Stevenson still does some activities with especially the fifth and sixth grade. During, they have a time right after lunch that allows for her to pull some of the students after they're identified. She does some enrichment activities with them as well as we have, we have the triple E program. I know Mr. Klein instituted and used some high building funds for that purchase of the laptop and to help bring in some other materials and things. And that program is still offered to every eighth grade student to participate, and it's totally voluntary. So that's would be my experience, my answer to that. Janet and I have spoken this year. She's interested, and hopefully, we can get the, perhaps, the students identified and those students to her so she could start that a little bit sooner than it's been in the past, but she.
So identification, would you start sooner, like elementary or you still?
No, no, it's still the school year, my fault. Yes, you're right, no. It wouldn't be sooner than the classroom.
Still basically middle school?
Still based in the middle school, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's part of the reason we pulled it into the district budget is, you know, we're fairly new administratively wise. And until we decide what we're gonna do with this year's money, I just thought, you know, rather than have it set in the middle school budget, it'll sit in the district budget. That's where most of our grant funds are, title one, title two, they set in there. So I just pulled it out until we'll we'll continue, I'm sure, with what the middle school's been doing and then see what else we can do in other buildings. So it's it's a meager amount of money, really, in an eight million dollar budget, twelve thousand bucks. So that we'll figure out what we're gonna do, do with it.
Thank you.
Well, I got all everybody's check sheets here then? Thank you.
Review and discuss facilities project.
Well, Sheri, Sean and I went to the city council meeting two weeks ago, basically with the opening statement of just gonna start a dialogue of the downtown gym and senior center. What they just, 'cause since, you know, since the the levy failed, you know, they've been offering the hospital. They don't want the hospital for their senior center. So, you know, we got, do they wanna stay there? Is, you know, just as just as start a dialogue as if something was ever gonna happen, would they be interested in updating their part or whatever? I mean, if you, correct me if I'm wrong, but we just started it. And they mentioned that Wednesday night, in two days, there's a grassroots meeting about a senior center in.
Community center.
Community center for the, well, it's for the kids, right?
Youth center.
Youth center. It's, yeah, youth center slash.
Overall, just community center now. Get rid of senior center, get rid of.
But, and so that is at the library, I believe. Seven, okay. And so they said, well, that might be the place, you know, it might be good. I'm sure there's gonna be some city councilmen there. It'd be a good place for maybe some of us to go see. Just find out what is being thought of or said in the community.
And basically, they expressed an interest in financially partnering with us. You know, if if and when we get to something, and correct me also, if we get to something that we'd all agree on, they at this point are willing to talk about that.
And, you know, they talked about a timeline, and I said, oh, we don't really have a timeline either. We're just starting, just that we're talking because where do we go from here? And I can't go to that meeting, I don't know if only three of us can without a call meeting or something, but I can't go, but.
How many do you have?
Four will go. You're probably going.
We have four. Hope we don't sit together and pray, hold on. Don't sit and talk.
But anyway, so that's kinda what what happened two weeks ago. Is there a sense from the city council that something needs to be done? I've also heard that, you know, it's pretty tempting to beat their rent too, you know. Hundred thirty-five, is it a hundred thirty-five dollar?
Hundred and thirty.
Hundred thirty.
St. Blue Valley pays us thirty-five.
Okay. So anyway.
Yeah, they've had a pretty good.
They've said, yeah, they've they've mentioned that, but, you know, I can't remember. Did Tom say something like, I don't know, powers as well, or someone said, you know? Of course, they want, you know, Linda, you know, wants better things, obviously, but.
I think the bigger issue was restrooms and handicap accessibility.
Parking's a big thing.
Couple of things, I guess, I got is Jim and the two science teachers and the architect. I mean, we're planning on getting together, coming up here and just kinda outlining things for a possible new science room, taking three rooms into two or whatever. We'll just let the conversation go where it may and bring some proposal back. But keep in mind, I'm guessing we'll have to pay the architect, like mileage and anything for drawings. I mean, they agreed to do it previously at no cost for the bond issue, but I don't think we'll get that great of a deal out of them right now.
Do they have anything in the bond issue that we could pull out?
Already prepared? I don't think so. They hadn't gone into much detail with the science rooms or, they hadn't gone into detail really on anything. And and just, you know, one of the things, food for thought, and I don't know, you know, if we ever wanna start a committee down the road here again, but I remember Jana and Sheri and Dennis when we interviewed those architects. Remember there was an architect from North Platte that told us he could do that project for six million? Remember that?
I do remember that.
Wish we'd hired him.
Oh, I know.
So, I mean, he's talked to me on the phone a couple of times and at least interested in coming back and visiting. But I, you know, is it too soon since we went through the process, you know, maybe? But he's at least interested in us, in coming back and sitting down and visiting with us. But I ran into him at administrator days, and we had a long talk, and then he called me last week. So I'm just putting a bug in your ear, you know. But we will sit down, hopefully, before the next board meeting. I don't know if we can do it by the tenth of September, but we'll try. If not, it'll be later and sit down and see what they have. I think, I'm guessing our science teacher's already making their wish list, so, you know.
The next item is board goals.
I think I enclosed them. And and I don't, we're all adults, so I don't know that we need to go over it. I think you know whether or not you as an individual met your goals or or not. I think we agreed to these as a the board and and the superintendent. Certainly, there are times I can certainly do better, and I'll I'll try. And I've tried to at least communicate two times a month. I think I've done that, hopefully. And I think we've probably done a better job of agreeing to disagree honorably here lately, and I think that's good. I think certainly on goal number three, we're certainly working on future issues and community priorities when we talk about facilities and our school improvement. We're gonna share a lot of our testing data with you in the coming months. October and November's probably our big month where we show a lot of our student data. You know, we did get our NISA results back, and they're they're made public tomorrow, and they're they're okay, but they're certainly not as good as we did a year ago. I think a year ago, in the fourteen grades that were tested, we were above the state average in all fourteen. And this year, we were not. So, you know, I guess it's hard to build on perfection maybe, but we're a little disappointed that it wasn't as good as it was a year ago. But I believe the principles that I met, and we talk about that all the time. And while you're disappointed, you never let one year of data determine, you know, your outcomes. You gotta look at that as a whole over over time, and you look at all sources of data, including achievement tests and explore tests and ACT and et cetera. So we did, we did for the second time in the last three years score above the state average on the ACT. Our our graduating senior classes did. That's only the second time in the history of Fillmore Central even. of Fillmore Central even, and it's been two of the last three years, so I think we're making some progress in, in places, so. But we normally adopt goals in September, at least we did last year, and I, you know, I think our goals, I think they're pertinent, I think they're good, but you'll have an opportunity maybe to discuss more and add more goals or take them away or whatever, but, you know, I think we can all look at them and decide if we individually lived up to them or not, I think we're all capable of that.
Is that board professional development in York this year, in the sense of the early one?
It's, it's in Utica, I believe, this year.
It's not something.
It's a membership meeting, and for some reason, it's in Utica, I'm not sure, it's always been in York, but York is also doing some remodeling and construction, so maybe that's why it's not in, not in York, so.
They don't want Omaha's in the middle.
It's always, yeah, it's always about the middle of the river. And there's a Carney one in the spring, there's a lot of, there's a lot of little, little fires.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably not.
That'd be funny, though.
I think the Carney one's the best one by far, I mean, it's a, it's a small, more of a small school.
Well, that would be the only one.
Yeah, it's the Nurksa Rural School, which is basically C and D schools and a few B, and it's really, really good one, I think.
And Omaha, like, it's fancy, though, so just dream of that.
Plus a lot of good food, a lot of restaurants, so, yeah.
You come back, we can eat that food.
All right, can we talk about the next board meeting?
Yeah.
It's Monday, September tenth, there is a JV football game at six thirty, which certainly I'd like to be at for a while, and Jana and possibly Jim, I wondered if we had an eight o'clock start, it's our president hearing, if that would be okay with everybody. I think the game will basically be over by eight o'clock, and rather than move it to a different night, we might have less conflicts if we just start a half hour later, that'd be okay with everybody?
That would, okay.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Any adjournments, any motion? Chief of Jim and Secretary of Rans, it says regular board meeting in August twentieth being adjourned, eight twenty.
Eight twenty-two is what I got.